The Lindbergh Schools Board of Education Workshop 1600 is called to order. Board President Kristy Watts is not able to attend this evening, therefore as Vice President, I will be presiding over the meeting. Dr. Lake, do we have any changes to the agenda?
We do not.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Andrew.
Second.
Second by Julia. Sorry, my pen had like a little thing on the top. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Did Rachel vote?
Yes.
Okay. So, motion passes five to zero. And now we will move to our discussion topics. Lindbergh Schools Assessment Report, Dr. Sparks.
We are incredibly excited to present the 24-25 school year data to you. Our focus, as you know, is both on our student achievement and our student growth. So what you will see here is a carefully curated slide deck by Dr. Jill Lawson, who is our Executive Director of Assessment and Student Services, that really tells the story of learning within Lindbergh from kindergarten through up to graduation. So I have the pleasure of turning it over to her to lead this presentation. And then Dr. Craig Hamby, our Executive Director of Elementary Education, is going to share content and context about the elementary version of the story as well. So, Dr. Lawson.
All right. Thank you so much for allowing us to present this tonight. As we dig into our assessment presentation story for you this evening, please know that you are, um, we are happy to stop and answer questions at any time. So tonight, we are going to take you on a journey of learning at Lindbergh Schools. Our district assessment plan is designed to capture reading and math learning K through 12. These benchmark assessments are carefully selected and reviewed by a district assessment committee each year. The benchmark assessments are intentional choices to monitor student performance and growth from the first day of kindergarten to the day of graduation. As students move through the learning journey, we use this information to ensure that elementary students are ready for middle school, middle school students are ready for high school, and high school students are ready for the post-secondary, college, and/or career experiences of their choice. A balanced assessment plan is key for using multiple data points to determine success. It is a way to triangulate the data to measure how we are doing with our district curriculum and how we are responsibly supporting individual growth. We administer state assessments to meet state and federal requirements. We administer the district assessments to monitor growth within the year and throughout years. And we administer classroom assessments to monitor essential skills and standards taught within the units of learning. All of these assessments play an essential part in measuring success, but the classroom assessments are truly my favorite and provide the much-needed immediate and explicit feedback for student growth. But tonight, we're going to focus on the district assessments. But I do want to take a moment to acknowledge our amazing principals, teachers, and students for all their hard work. We are lucky to sit here at this table and represent them as we share their successes this evening. On our compass plan, we specify specific measurable indicators. The measurable indicators will be highlighted in red as we move through the data story. Our goals are that 80% or higher, as you can see up here, 80% or higher for third-grade students demonstrate low-risk or advanced on the curriculum-based measurement assessment, or 80% or higher of students will meet the average, high-average, or high quintile target for achievement in math and reading based on NWEA benchmark assessments. So although we would, we have 80% or higher shown here, we're always striving to get the best results for our students. So now I'll turn it over to Dr. Hamby.
Good afternoon. I am going to speak a little bit about our early reading assessments first. On the screen right now, you see the four early reading assessments that our kiddos take in grades K through three. We have early reading, auto reading, A-reading, and CBM reading. And I'll go into a little bit more specifics about each one of those in the upcoming slides. I'd like to begin my part of our data story with our earliest learners. Our assessment journey begins in kindergarten. Our kindergarten and first grade students take the early reading assessment that is part of the FastBridge suite of assessments. I'm changing it on my laptop, but I'm not changing it on here, so sorry about that. Early reading includes subtests that measure critical early reading skills of phonemic awareness and phonics. It includes subtests consisting of nonsense words, word segmenting, letter sounds, onset sounds, and in first grade, sight words. FastBridge assessments use performance benchmarks that increase as the year progresses. The benchmarks measure students' progress against a criterion or a set standard. These are often referred to as criterion reference tests, which is different than the norm reference test. We'll speak a little bit later. Let's begin with our K and 1 early reading data. You can see in the cohort chart that this cohort of students saw growth of 9% from 52 to 61% in the low-risk area over the last two years. Our kindergarten has gotten incrementally better each year, being at 65% in the low-risk category at the end of the year, which is a 21% increase over the last three years. First grade has also seen increases, being at 61% low-risk this year, which is an increase of 15% over the last three years. At first glance, it appears that the green area of the graph is going in the wrong direction. It's important to know that we look at the first four years of school, grades K through three, as our learning-to-read years. And we treat this as a marathon rather than a sprint, and our first finish line is really what we're looking for in the spring of third grade. It's, you're not going to teach kids to read in one year, so we look at it over the bulk of the time. In previous years, we did not give the fall screener to kindergarten students because it was the first month of school for these kiddos. However, since we've begun this practice, it's provided teachers with valuable insight into the academic abilities of their students. As the year progresses, the benchmark increases and the assessment is more rigorous. So this is not a pre-test with an identical post-test. The test is different at different times during the year. However, as the year progresses, the teachers are providing high-quality instruction and the students are more readily, they're more ready for those increasing benchmarks, and they're soaking up that knowledge from their teachers. It's important to gather this fall data because students do not show up to class on the first day with the same experiences or readiness skills. Teachers are able to use this information to determine which students need language skills, such as building expressive and receptive language, or being able to hold a conversation with peers, to which students are ready for work on the alphabetic principle, to which students are already reading when they enter kindergarten. Differing background knowledge means students will have various levels of vocabulary or varying lexicons. To use my marathon analogy again, the students don't all begin at the same starting line. Once teachers have an understanding of where their students are academically, they begin to fill in the gaps. For our early readers, this is systematic explicit instruction on foundational reading skills, such as phonemic awareness, phonics, rhyming, encoding, and decoding. Our story progresses into second and third grade. Thank you. I'm just going to hand that to you right now. With FastBridge auto reading. Auto reading is a computer-based assessment that measures reading skills, including vocabulary, word identification, and encoding. You can see from the graph, the increase from fall to spring in both grade levels, as well as cohort growth of 9%. Third grade has maintained an average end-of-year score of 86% in the low-risk category over the past four years. We saw good gains in several student groups, including students with an IEP, African-American students, and multilingual students. At this time, I'd like to point out a theme in our data story. As we continue with our story, we'll get the opportunity to celebrate lots of academic growth and see several goals met. One clear focus for us going forward is to address the achievement gaps between our total scores and the scores of our student groups. Ensuring the success of these students is a key focus for the upcoming school year with targeted strategies and resources dedicated to supporting their academic growth and closing these achievement gaps. Next year, we will begin using Benchmark Express with our multilingual students, which is a program dedicated to them that fits in with our Benchmark Advanced program that we started this previous year. We have additional literacy training options available for our special education staff that includes work on goal-setting and progress monitoring. By the end of the 24-25 school year, all K through three teachers will be letter-certified. We continue to work to improve our MTSS process, including Tier Two options for students, and that staff realize and believe that all means all. The next step in our journey is the A-reading assessment in second grade. This is a computer-adaptive assessment to screen students' broad reading abilities, including foundational reading skills, reading literature, language, and informational reading. This assessment sets the stage for the future norm-reference assessments the students will take in future years. Looking at the data, we have steady growth over the year. Not only did we increase the advanced low-risk category by 7%, but we also decreased the high-risk category by 7%. And we saw good gains in our IEP and African-American student groups. Now, we've reached the first finish line for our early readers, or our learning-to-read years, and this is the CBM reading assessment for grades 1 through 3. CBM is a curriculum-based measurement that is three one-minute reading passages. It measures accuracy in overall words per minute, which is a measure of oral reading fluency. We see good growth from fall to spring in both second and third grades. Last year, we had 86% of our first grade in the advanced to low-risk category, 84% in second grade, and 87% in third grade, which is our first compass goal of the evening. It's in red, which means we met the goal. You also see positive growth in our CBM cohort over on the right of the slide. Having reached the finish line of early reading, our story takes a turn into early math. Much like reading, we spend the first years of school building foundational numeracy skills. Students will work on counting, one-to-one correspondence, quantity discrimination, patterns, and basic computation skills. Our teachers use a couple of key strategies for success in math. First is math discourse. Students get opportunities to share strategies and problem-solving skills with their peers. This helps with communication, collaboration, and critical thinking skills. The second is explicit, direct instruction that follows a predictable pattern of concrete examples to build conceptual knowledge, to representational knowledge, to abstract principles. Students who develop good math skills at the primary level will typically have higher aptitude in math in later years. The math assessment we use in early math is our I-Ready diagnostic. It's given three times a year to grades K through 2. Grades 3 through 5 are more than welcome to take it. It is only mandatory for them to take it in the fall because that sets up their digital personalized learning program, MyPath. Grades 3 through 5 are excused the rest of the year because they're taking NWEA math, and I don't want to ask them to take more assessments than we absolutely have to ask them to do. Looking at the data, we see major growth in all three grade levels from fall to spring. To provide some context for the cohorts, the assessment grows more rigorous throughout the year and from year to year. Each year, there are also more achievement levels, starting with just two levels of kindergarten. You're either on grade level, or you're above grade level. First grade, we added a category, so now you're either on, above, or below. Next year, we add another one, so you can be above, on, one grade level below, two grade levels below. And they'll add one more, a fifth one, by third grade. Each category is added till we get to the five categories. Our overall I-Ready scores, if we got everyone K through 5 together, in the 2020, or in the 21-22 school year, was 66%, and that has increased to 77% last year. At this point, slide, what questions do you have?
Can you explain again for me on the I-Ready math? How, because there's such a discrepancy between the fall and the spring, how, it, are they, it's not the same in the fall as it is in the spring? It's harder, but?
It always becomes, so it's, it's a balancing act. So yes, the test is going to be more rigorous. So, but we've also had a year of instruction, and the kids have been there learning. So the benchmarks are more rigorous, but we, our hope is that they do keep up the benchmarks. As the grades go on, though, it keeps, they're cutting it up into more achievement levels, which makes it a little bit more difficult to land in those top two, because now you have some other ones. And also, if you're in the yellow, after speaking with I-Ready for the past three years, if you're in the yellow in the first half of the year, you're really still on grade level. It's not till the second semester that they would expect you to be in the green. So it's kind of, you almost have to wait and see where you're at at the end of the year.
Does this, I'm kind of guessing, does this mean that our kindergartners are coming in with better reading skills than math skills, just because their reading scores are much higher than their math scores? Or is that not?
I would say no. I think the idea is that in the fall, they're testing them on, like, let's take, for example, first grade. When they come in in the fall, they're giving them the end-of-the-year assessment to see where kids are at the beginning of the year on that. And they're not expected to have mastered those skills till the spring. So the, let's, I'm a little bit hard of seeing the 15% at the top of the first grade in the fall. Is that correct? Let's, those kids are already on grade level for the end-of-the-year targets. So now it's time for the teachers to use that information to continue to accelerate the students and enrich them. So in, probably in a perfect I-Ready world, every student would be in the yellow at the beginning of the year. They're almost ready to learn all those things, and any kid that's already in the green is already at an end-of-the-year target. Am I correct?
You're correct. I was going to go a slightly different direction with it, and the fact that, so everything Jill said was spot-on, correct? Especially with the kids being above grade level in the, in that fall assessment. I would say, though, that that reading assessment in the fall is not the most, I mean, it's kindergartners in the first month of school. They're not going to ask too much of them. So it's not the most rigorous test, which then, it gives us very valuable information. It's worth doing, but it's nowhere near what they have to take at the end.
Well, and let's juxtapose that. So in the fall for our reading students in kindergarten, they're taking different subtests than they are at the end of the year for a kindergartner in reading. With I-Ready, it's the same tests. So in kindergarten, it's, there's like four subtests, and some of those are so easy because they're identifying a picture. To, at the end of the year, they're actually being asked to read a sentence or do sight words. So it's really not the same. It's, it's just a little different.
It's hard to compare the two tests. I would also say that I think, at home, I'm making a big generalization here, so don't record this. I think that families will read to students at home. You read, you know, bedtime stories, and then there's a little bit more of that. There's not as much math practice going on with those toddlers before they get to school. I know there's a little bit of counting, and maybe we're doing some shaves, but I think there is a little bit more emphasis on literacy skills before we get to school than there are math skills. Thank you, Jill.
Julia, great questions. Anyone else?
I have one question. Do you think, so going back to literacy, um, do you think that we can make any correlation between our new ELA curriculum and what we're seeing with these assessments now? Or do you think there is still time that is needed to see, like, how our new curriculum is affecting and helping our students?
I generally will say, give every, any program, I don't care what subject, give it three years. I will say this, that we did not really see an implementation dip with the new program, which is exciting. We did not see, and we did not see it with I-Ready a couple of years ago, which I attribute a lot of that to Dr. Walter, number one, for our training, and then the teachers also. So, you know, think about all those teachers going through letters training the last few years. It's a, it's not the easiest program. It's a lot of time, and we're on the cusp of having every K through three teacher sort of, and quite a few 4 and 5, all the reading specialists, all the ML teachers, all certified. So there's been a lot done in this district with literacy instruction over the past six years. I would attribute a lot of it to that, not as much to the program. Program's great, but I think the work of our staff more than the program.
That's what I was going to jump in and say. I mean, we, our approach, it goes back to our phonics impact study we did five years ago? Something like that? It's, yeah. No, it was longer than that, six years ago. And it's just, I think our, our, our approach to how we teach reading is much different now. And I think that's, would also be why we don't have a implementation dip, is because our practices are solid in what we're doing with our kids, and we're seeing the benefits. And we, we knew we'd get the right stuff in place. This is what we were predicting we would start seeing.
And I think that just reinforces the idea that programs aren't curriculum, right? You write curriculum, and the program is a resource to instruct that. So to Craig's point, you know, the professional learning that has happened, the workaround, really providing more clarity about what are our priority standards and narrowing down what are the expectations of students when they truly master those skills. So all of those pieces come together to create a very comprehensive picture of instruction.
We have a better approach to teaching reading, and teachers are better equipped to teach reading now than at any point since I've been here. So, since 2001. Probably before then, too. What other questions?
I have a question about the reading tests. I know, like, with NWA for the older kids, it's kind of a, like, we give you some questions, and then we determine, like, what the next questions will be. Are these like that? Or are these, everyone's kind of getting the same test?
The only one that's adaptive, and these, is A-reading, A-reading for second grade. Everything else is set. And they're, so the early reading, that's a teacher giving it one-on-one to the students, and it's the four subtests. When we get to the auto reading for second and third grade, it's, it's on the computer, but we're still only doing three of the subtests. They go off the fast track to get the information we need. And then the CBM is once again in-person, live. So the only one that's adaptive is going to be the A-reading in second grade, which is kind of, it's almost in preparation to get them ready for that NWA in third grade, because it's, it's different than the other ones.
And then my second question, we talked a lot about, like, how the tests differed, for example, in first grade from fall to spring, but how do those tests differ from, like, fall of first grade, or I'm sorry, spring of first grade to fall of second grade?
In a perfect world, it would be very similar. It would pick up right where they left off. But I don't have, when we first started doing this, I was boots on the ground in a classroom, giving the ran to a bunch of first graders. But the last few years, I haven't, you know, been in there watching the kids actually take the test. So it's hard to gauge that exactly. So we look more at, within the year, you can tell, because a classroom teacher can tell what's being asked of the kids within the classroom, but it's always a little different. Like, I don't even know what they were asked last year. But in a perfect world, it would kind of be setting up to pass the baton, like, okay, here's where we finished up. That should be kind of where you start next year.
Thank you.
I didn't answer it, but that's.
I was going to say, I think the one thing is, we, I mean, it's a term used in the assessment world, the summer slide, in that students do typically have some decline from their, their scores from the spring to the fall. But I think one of the interesting things, and we can always pull any data for you at any given time, but the spring to spring is a very interesting thing to look, and you'll see that that really does, there may be a little dip, but they come right back.
Right.
So with routines and good strategies and high-quality teaching, our kids can make that growth from the summer slide.
Thanks.
I had one question on our, our assessment plan, right? As I look through, for the, the nine through 12, we do the end-of-course assessments. Are there any other assessments that mirror this same cadence, where it's like, where do you start? Where do you?
Yes, and we'll get to those as we go through, we'll, we'll get to high school as well.
Thank you.
I had a question. Back to the, the very first slide, I guess, the kindergarten and first grade fast early reading. I understand what you've already said about how it's looking really K through three, journey not the sprint. I'm curious, though, in, in both kindergarten and then in, in first grade, the fall to spring, the increase in the red? I know the test, you said it changes, the, the, I guess I'm just curious, and with the same with, like, the plateauing, and then the findings, plateauing in the onset sounds, and decreased in letter sounds. I'm just curious what you think might be causing that in both of those grades, because it looks like in second and third grade, that's not the case.
It is, and it's a different test, that's part of it.
Okay.
So part of it's just, it's this test, it's the age of the kids, you know, developmentally, what are they ready for? What are they able to do? Also, typically, we just went fall to spring in this presentation. We, usually, we see gains from the fall to the winter, and then, for whatever reason, we see a little drop back from winter to spring. So something we're still trying to figure out at that point. But I would say with K and 1, that test is different. It's hard to even compare that to the auto reading in second, third grade, because it's just different. But what we really look into is not even so much the total score. What we like to dig into is, like, let's look at that 11% first grade-spring, is, okay, who are those kids? Now, let's look at the subtests. How did they perform in each of these four subtests? Okay, they didn't do well in these two subtests. What do we need to do instructionally to get them up to speed in these two subtests? So, once again, it's, we kind of look at the whole picture, but this is really good forward of data for us, because it gives us almost the prescription for those kids in the red of what do we need to do? What did we miss? What do they not have? So that's the kind of, that's kind of the approach we have to it. I know Jill wanted to add something.
I do. I always want to add something, so, I'm so sorry. So a couple things. One is, that is true, and we also get an increase of students throughout the year. And I make this choice every time I do this particular presentation. I could say, nope, I'm only going to do the kids that were rostered at the beginning of the year, but I don't feel like that's the true assessment. So whether a student comes in November, or, it's true assessment report. So whether a student comes in November or February, they're in. We get them, and they're in. So that is always going to be, there may be some difference between the scores depending on as students transfer. But then, I also want to get real with our data, too. We really need to look at our student groups. I think that, again, we're going to be talking about that as we go through this, but, I mean, it's really time to, like, make that a very intentional part of our data teams with our principals. They're all in, they're fantastic about it, but just like spending more time on our action steps with our student groups. So sometimes when you see that red increase or things, I think that that is a part of the work that we have to do. So as, although I want to celebrate all the amazing things, just because I think we're all really hard on ourselves and want to see every student do really well, that critical eye is looking at, we really need to target our students who are struggling or may not respond to the learning the same way every other, you know, the majority of the students do in the class.
I got a quick question. So you brought up the point that as kids come into our system, do we have any kind of data, or do you guys look at any kind of data that says, if a kid starts with us in kindergarten through eighth grade, how they perform? And if a kid comes to us in second grade, is it an average of two years before? If they're behind, that we get them caught up? Or, you know, typically, you know, I, I know in other districts that I had worked in, typically when those new students moved in, they were typically behind our students that had started with us in kindergarten. And then we would have time to catch, we had a certain amount of time to get them caught up. So I didn't know if you guys, if we haven't looked at that, that, I would be curious to kind of start looking.
Yeah, we talk about that in the assessment world, real quick, just so sorry. We talk about that in the assessment world all the time, and we know that there are some districts that do that, but at the same time, we're all kind of, it's kind of a, a big deal on how we feel about that. Because it, when you start to reveal data in that particular way, sometimes it kind of makes people feel like, oh, I didn't, you know, like, if you didn't start here, you're not, you know, going to be achieving or seen as a part of the, the whole, like, journey throughout. So I can pull that at any given time. I don't include that in this particular one.
So it's not about public, it's about for you to work with our teachers on
Oh, okay.
how long is it going to take us, or what do we need to do? On average, you know, by this time, you know, typically a kid comes to us in third grade, by fifth grade, in two years, they're right on path. And having that information internally, it's not to say, oh, you were with us, you're not going to do as good. That's, that wasn't, that, that would not be the purpose of the data, so.
Okay.
Two, two final thoughts before we move on from your question. I think we could almost look at that as an additional student group, as we focus on these student groups, like, who are the kiddos who haven't been with us the whole time? And is there targeted instruction that they need? But then also, Rachel, to your point, I wanted to say that where I was focusing on the red, what do we need to do with it? A lot of times, what Jill mentioned, like, those kids are already in the green at the beginning of the year. We have to make sure we look and see, what are we doing for them? Because a lot of this is achievement right now, but there's also a growth factor that comes into play. And, and those kiddos who walk in the, the door and they're proficient on day one, they have to grow too, and we have to make sure we're, we're doing targeted instruction for them as well.
I'm sorry, I had one last thing. The, I, I don't know if the right, the right reaction, but I was, I was impressed. I was thrilled to see kindergarten coming in at that 75% low-risk, 20% some-risk. I know that that's before they get into us, so probably we're not supposed to be at all concerned about that, but I, I would be curious, this is the first year you said we did kindergarten?
We've done it two years now.
Two years, okay. How do we compare maybe just them to last year, but also to other districts? Like, I'm thrilled, maybe thrilled, I'm thrilled to see this much on target coming in already day one. And are there things that we are doing or can keep doing to keep that the case?
I'll be, so a couple of things, I'll be honest, we don't look so much at the fall. It's very formative for us. The teachers have, I thought they might balk a little bit at it, because, and I did, too. It's like, we're going to give these five-year-olds an assessment in the first month of school, but it ended up giving us some really valuable information, and I think it changed some teachers' expectations of their students towards like, oh, they can already do this, so I need to, I'm going to have to change things up. So it's, it's been great in that capacity. Jill kind of mentioned this earlier, though, the- Uh, Jill kind of mentioned this earlier, though, the, the rigor of that one, it's with those four sub-tests. We don't even give them all four of the sub-tests at the beginning of the year, they kind of gradually pick those up throughout the year. But that goes along with, we haven't introduced so many concepts, so they can't even do that at the beginning of the year. So um it gives us great formative data, and we're super excited that kids are walking in the door from our community at this level, which is awesome. But we, we probably focus more on that end goal at the end of the year. And just one last thought, it's not, it's not on here, cause I mentioned that we had a twenty-one percent increase. But four years ago, that sixty-five in the kindergarten spring was thirty-eight. So.
It made me think about the Parents' Teachers Program that my now-college sophomore went through when she was testing to go into kindergarten. I think this is wonderful, that this is what our community is able to bring to us.
Anything we can do at early childhood to set the stage. And, and our early childhood here in the district is not, the, the, the early childhood people will come after me, cause I, I call it pre-academics. And they say, no, it's academics, but it's a little different than what we do school age. But it's, you know, those, those behaviors they're learning and how to communicate with their peers and how to, so the language skills. If a student doesn't have good language skills when they come in, they're not gonna be able to pick up the written languages quickly. So, uh, all those things, kids being able to go to preschool and have those experiences. And our community is great, where I think a lot of our kiddos get that opportunity, that really helps set the stage for that in the fall.
I have one more question. We flipped this year to take this before math in spring. And so even doing that, you still saw that spring or that winter to spring dip?
We did that last year, too. I think this is the second year we've made that flip, and that pattern exists, yeah.
Any last questions for the early readers and early mathematicians? All right, we're gonna keep moving.
Okay, so we're gonna move into N W E A, which is a computer-based adaptive interim assessment that we use for reading and math. The N W E A tool is a norm reference assessment, which means that it does not benchmark grade level expectations, but instead provides information on how our students are doing in comparison to their peers. And I just want to, um, for those that are hearing about N W E A for the first time in this assessment presentation, just know that the norms that are created for this were done in two thousand, they were released in two thousand twenty and actually um organized from data collected in two thousand eighteen area. So we are looking at pre-pandemic norms when we're comparing our students. So um, that's just wanted to, for you to keep that in mind. Limburg administers N W E A in the fall, winter, and spring, and we are looking for that full-year growth. Um, and we are also able to monitor growth over multiple years, so within the year and through multiple years. Unlike early reading assessments, we are now going to consider high as the top-performing category. So in the early reading, high risk was um a bad term, using that term high. Now, when I say high, we're looking, it's a really great thing. So in low, which was considered a top category in the early readers as low risk, is now a low thing. Got it? Okay. That was more from me, half for you. Okay, so the N W E A journey starts in our third grade. So this is, um, you can switch it, please, thank you. The, um, this journey starts in our third grade, and this is the very first year our third graders took this assessment. So let's take a look and see how they did. So if you look up here, we have our fall to spring in each category. And up here, we have third, fourth, and fifth grade reading all together. So our third grade almost met our goal in the fall with seventy-nine percent and um of our students performing in the average to high quintile. They ended the year with thirty, eighty-three percent, and we are very grateful for these students and teachers' hard work. So you will see that highlighted in red because they met the, they met the target. Another celebration is for fourth grade students who almost met their target in the fall and finished the year with eighty-four percent average to high. Fifth grade almost made it, but finished the year with seventy-nine percent of students hitting the target. However, we cannot ignore the four percent increase from fall to spring for our fifth graders. Move on to the next one. Um, elementary, N W E A math had some areas to celebrate as well. Although we did not see the um compass target met in spring for third grade, they did increase by seven percent from fall to spring, which is awesome. I mean, that's really great. So fourth grade increased from five percent from the fall to spring, and we did meet our target. Fifth grade came three percent below the target at seventy-seven percent, and this is a one percent dis- or decrease from the fall. We do need to celebrate the free-reduce student group um for fifth grade, which exceeded the total population um at seventy-eight percent, which is a really great accomplishment. After looking at elementary reading and math, we can see there are some great, there, you know, there is some great learning and hard work from our teachers and students. Even though we did not hit our target in every area, we were only one to three percent off the mark. So we'll continue to strive to hit that. Okay, the students are getting bigger and the learning is getting more complex and abstract as we move into middle school. Our sixth graders ended the year at seventy-seven percent average and above. But I would like to point out that sixth grade has had an incremental improvement over the last three years by eleven percent. The seventh graders ended the year at seventy-seven percent, but looking to the right at the cohort data, they deserve some accolades for the growth from when these seventh graders were in fifth grade. That's a six percent increase. Continuing to eighth grade, we will see slight movement in quantiles from fall to spring, but the cohort growth from when the students were in sixth grade is commendable and shows a nine percent increase. So let's take a look at our sixth grade math students. They started the year at eighty percent and increased, and increased to eighty-two percent, another compass goal met. Seventh grade ended this year with seventy-seven percent, not quite meeting the eighty percent target, but had a four percent increase from the fall. Eighth grade decreased by two percent between the fall and the spring. And I would like to point out, because we're also critical and we want the very best, that, I would say that eighth grade math is definitely a curricular area to investigate. And with, so, wanna highlight everything, but I also want to make sure you know, we know when things aren't exactly where we want them to be and have a plan to address them. So, um, let's see, where did I leave off? But I do want to, okay, we, to acknowledge the cohort data also to the right, so that you guys can see all of that as well and where those growth, the growth happened. So we're gonna move on to um our students who are now getting taller, and now we're in the high school. And um with an eighty-eight percent of our English one students meeting the target in the fall, right when they come in. So there's just like this, I don't know what our high school English teachers do in the ninth grade, but they like really get serious about N W E A in that fall. And then I think they're like, I'm not gonna do anything um during power lunch except to go and play, and I don't want any academic support. So maybe that's what it is, uh, whatever works, that's fantastic. They did decrease to eighty-four percent by spring, and I will tell you that, um, I mean, that's still meeting the target. But I will tell you that there is this dip as students get older from fall to spring, where they're just like, I'm tired and I'm done. And, and so we do see a little bit of that as well. But I do want to really look at that cohort data to the right. So that looks pretty great, right? From when these students were in seventh grade to ninth grade year, I mean, that's a twelve percent increase that we're seeing in our students. So amazing, um, amazing work. So that is, to answer your question, a little bit of the high school um data that we will also show now. After the English one, the students do move on into the state assessment side of our balanced assessment plan and start to um take E O C assessments. So English one, ninth graders take N W E A, and then as part of our plan, um, as required by the state, the sophomores taking those two E O Cs. And so we use that. And then the teachers at the high school have done such an amazing job to kind of do some assessment writing of their own. It's a little, you know, teacher-written to just not, not uh practice and just try to like teach to a test, but also try to benchmark along the year to make sure kids are capturing those things to do well on the, the E O C assessment as well.
I have a question about the E O C, too. So we do the Algebra One N W E A, but we do Algebra Two E O C state test?
But we do Algebra One as well.
So our ninth graders are taking the two tests again?
Well, I'm gonna get to algebra here in a second, it's a little bit different, because our algebra assessment is not just ninth grade, it's ninth through twelfth grade students.
Whenever they take algebra.
Whenever they take it is, yeah, exactly, to answer that. So this is our first year doing.
So you could have some freshmen doing both, okay?
Yes, you could, for sure. And some students may be delayed, because we may have students in Algebra One A who are going to take the N W E A, but they're not gonna take the E O C until they finish Algebra One B.
Right, okay, thank you.
And that's also not taking to, taking into account the students that are like in middle school that are taking these courses, correct? Like, that's not part of the data?
Yes.
Oh, it is?
The eighth graders are represented, if, if they're taking algebra in eighth grade, you will see them in the middle school data, not in this data.
Yeah, that's what I meant, okay.
So this would be high school only.
Right.
Who are taking algebra. If they're taking geometry, they're not represented in the math data here at all.
Right, okay.
So I'm gonna repeat that exact same thing right here. So um, so this is our first year administering the N W E A to our Algebra One students. So unlike English one, which includes all ninth graders, um, students who are enrolled in Algebra One courses are the one, are, are taking this particular test. That's Algebra One, Algebra One A, and Algebra One B. So we do not have cohort data, nor we ever, um, for our Algebra One. And as you can see, we did not meet the benchmark in this particular assessment. This, this particular student group um does not include any of our, our students who are in any advanced-level courses beyond um Algebra One, geometry, Algebra Two, calculus, or anything. And it does not include any students who are taking Algebra One at the eighth grade level. So, just to give you an idea. But what we do want to see, and we don't necessarily hear, this is our very first year administering it with them, but we want to still see growth from the fall to the spring, no matter what. So wherever the students are, we want to see that growth happen from where they are and get them where we want them to be, so.
Just for the public, cause I think you all understand, Algebra One A, so basically you're taking Algebra One over two years. So you do half of it in A over the entire year that you would do in a normal first semester. And then you do B, which would be the second semester, you do it over a two-year period. So just the public, if you're wanting to know, what's this Algebra One A and One B? It's basically taking Algebra One and spreading it over the course of two years.
I have a fun fact for you. If you look at the fourth bullet, it says of the four math strands assessed in this N W A, uh, it's a general N W A assessment, like a ninth-grade N W A assessment, but these kiddos are taking Algebra One. So the strand that they performed the lowest on was geometry and measurement. And guess what? They don't teach in Algebra One, geometry, and measurement. So they would have to rely on previous knowledge to be able to pass that part. So I think that factors in two things as well. That was my fun fact for the evening.
Algebra One and English One are required courses for high school graduation, right? So everyone will take those courses at some point in their, in their high school career?
Three years of math, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so this year, here's the new reveal, we have added a measure to our compass goal. So like the performance quantiles, low, low, average, average, high, average, and high, those um quantiles for performance, they also through N W E A have growth quantiles. And so students can, students can be in the highest quintile, in the ninety, you know, second percentile, but show like five percent growth. So just to give you an idea, or we could have a student who is in a low-average quintile with maybe, um, let's say twenty-sixth, they're in the twenty-sixth percentile. That's their, um, for performance, and they're in that low average, but they had eighty-six percentile in growth. So those are some things that we can also see through the N W E A platform. So we are adding this particular growth goal to our compass plan that seventy percent or higher of students will meet the average, high average, or high quintile for growth in math and reading based on N W E A spring benchmark assessment. So we're now gonna be able to say, here's what our performance is, here's what our growth is, looking at the quintile um measures. So we'll be adding that in. And just to give you a baseline, right now, we're at sixty-five percent for our reading and sixty-five percent um for our math as well. And so we are, we set that seventy percent to get that five percent increase. And I just want to say that we always wanted to be as many, we want it to be as close to um strive for excellence at all costs. But we also want to make realistic um goals where we can see these particular increases and support our teachers throughout this time. So wanted to give you this big reveal, share this baseline, and, and so you have an understanding of what will show up in the future.
Can you tell now where the students are in, in the growth? Is it, is it students who are already very high achieving? Are they the ones growing more? Are the students who are starting lower, are they growing more?
It's a hit or miss, and I will say that there are students that are very high achieving that aren't showing as much growth. Um, and so, but there are also low-achieving students that aren't showing as much growth. It's a hit or miss, it's a very individualized thing. But I will tell you this, just because I had, I think I ran into Dr. Lake's office and shared something as well, and I've um shared this with Tara, too. We can take the median growth percentile for performance and for growth and put it into a quadrant so that we can see who are students that are in that high-performance, high-growth area. And so if I take all of our, I can do that, that data by students, by buildings, by grade. I have even taken it and put it in by um, taken it and put it, all the students in together. And I will tell you right now, even though I don't have this displayed, and I was kind of playing around with the idea of adding it this year, that our students at Limburg in reading and math are all in the high, um, high-growth, high, um, performance quadrant. Now, it's not, you know, they're, they're right above in that sixty percent on the high-growth, um, high-performance, but they're all in that particular quadrant, which is where you want your students to be.
And just for help in reading the N W A scores, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong on this, wouldn't it be, since this is a nationally-normed test, wouldn't most schools, if you pick any random school in the country, only fifty percent would be average and above?
Mm-hmm. That's exactly how it's set. There, they, they draw that right down the middle of the curve. So fifty percent is average. So anytime that you're above that fifty percentile, it, you're, you're above where every other um student, building, district that is participating in this assessment is. And I will tell you that we are performing really well in comparison to our peer districts, to our peer um buildings by peer grade. And our buildings particularly, some of them have a lot to celebrate, because they far exceed um the growth than many grade levels and buildings that are participating in W E A nationwide.
I kind of had a question about one of the findings. It was kind of from farther back, kind of stood out to me from the, I think it was third, fourth, and fifth grade um data. And it's, I think the bullet point said something about seventy-five percent of African-American students in our district scoring average in, I think it was reading or math or something?
It's the fifth-grade African-American students, seventy-five percent of them scored in the average to high quintile at the end of the year.
All right, how does that compare to like other um, like racial groups in that, in the same regard?
They, in that particular test, that student group outperformed most of the other student groups. So that, that's why we brought attention to it, cause sometimes, that's the one we've said is gonna be a focus of us closing the achievement gap. So we did want to put in, when one of those student groups in a particular grade level was doing really well, we wanted to recognize that.
Okay, thank you.
I did notice that the findings and bullet points stopped breaking down um the African-American scores more in middle school. Is there anything to note about that? Do those scores get lower in middle school?
Yes, they did. They are an area of focus, um, the student groups are. And so what we wanted to do was make sure that when we did see like something that was closer to closing the gap or um a higher-performing category, that we did at least acknowledge and mention it. Because there are some in that A reading, excuse me, A reading assessment with I U P, the, 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 um, the growth for students with I U Ps was really tremendous. So we wanted to make sure, like areas like that, that we brought back out to share.
I would say, looking at the student group data across all the assessments, you typically see a similar trend that we'll see in total. Uh, and you will definitely see the trend of fall, and we do a lot better in winter, and then we tail off in spring. I mean, that was prevalent across all of them. But regardless, the, the gap between. But, uh, regardless, the, the gap between the student group scores and the total scores is something that we have to address.
Other NWEA questions before I highlight our AP data from this last year?
Could you just say for me one more time, eighth grade math? Are those students that are not taking Algebra One as eighth graders? Is that correct?
No, the eighth grade students, just every eighth grade student, regardless of what math class they are in, are taking the eighth grade NWEA.
So that includes, thank you, the Algebra One eighth graders as well as traditional eighth grade math?
Yes. And so, uh, another way to think about it, just for, um, just for some clarity, is NWEA has a, an elementary assessment, and then they have a six-plus assessment. And that six-plus goes all the way up to 12th grade. And so all of our students from sixth grade to algebra in the high school are taking the six plus, six plus NWEA assessment. So, um, it's, yeah, they're all in it.
Quick question, so if I'm an eighth grader and I'm taking Algebra One in eighth grade, I'm taking the end of course exam, correct? So it does not count in our eighth grade math proficiency scores, those kids that are actually are, kids that are doing Algebra One, or some of our better math students in eighth grade, and those scores don't count, okay?
That's correct. If you're taking Algebra One, if you're in sixth, seventh, or eighth grade, you're taking the Algebra One EOC and not the grade level assessment. So when you see state assessment scores come in, then you're gonna see the eighth grade grade level assessment, which is the GL, grade level assessment, which is the, um, three through eight test. You're gonna see that score for eighth graders, and then you're going to see the Algebra One EOC score for eighth graders, which are all your students that are taking that test. So all the Algebra One kids that participate in the, all of the eight, sixth or eighth graders who participate in the Algebra One EOC are pulled from our state grade level assessment. So you'll see the scores really be like, they're, they're a little, they're a little different.
So basically, what you would probably describe as your highest performing in math are not taking their grade level one. So those scores are probably lower than if they were taking it overall.
That is correct.
Well said, yes.
So the map, the map score, math scores will skew low for eighth grade.
Or sixth grade, because we don't have a lot of sixth, but we have some, you know? And if you're a sixth grader and you're taking Algebra One, you're probably pretty good at math, I would think, so.
But eighth grade is really where you see that differentiation happen, because they're in the Algebra One scores.
This seems like a good place for me to ask this question too, is, you know, we're talking about assessments, and this is all the NWEA and, and assessments that we care about. Can you just explain maybe for the people who are watching, why we're not talking about map scores here today?
Well, one of the things that we have done over the past few years is we have really moved away from this once-a-year end of, end of the school year assessment that really doesn't give us anything that can impact student learning. So the benefit of all of the assessments that we've, um, outlined here today is that they give us actionable data to be able to measure student growth in real time and impact student learning, so we can see over time. When you look at a state assessment, it is, we like to affectionately call it an autopsy. Um, we get the data late. The students, or the teachers who get the data on their students no longer are serving those students. Um, so it gives you a snapshot in time that does not have the authenticity that our NWEA and our FastBridge and our iReady assessments do. So this, um, this data is, as we've talked about, it is comparable to what's happening nationally. So it's not something that we've created and said, all right, this is how we're gonna measure our students and, and not have any frame of reference for what this means as to the academic success of students within Lindbergh schools. It gives us a very strong way to compare our student achievement and our student growth. As you pointed out, fifty percent would be the, the average. So when we're talking about the fact that we have the goal of eighty percent of our students or above, would be in that average to high range. We have high expectations for student learning. Similarly for growth, our goal with these assessments is to measure growth and our impact directly on what happens for students. If we were looking at student growth achievement, we would expect to see fifty percent of our students hitting their growth targets, because that would be an average across the nation. We're sitting currently at sixty-five and wanting to continue to grow that even more. So this data gives us a much more comprehensive way to look at student achievement and student learning.
And, you know, our messaging to our parents is, you know, you wanna hold us accountable. We have assessments that say, this is where your kid starts at the beginning of the year, this is where they are at the end of the year, and hold us accountable for that growth piece. And then we'll get the autopsy and see how we did. But, you know, our focus really is starting, where, where'd you start here, and did we move you along the pendulum? And that's why this new focus on high growth, you know, but the fact that, you know, fifty percent would be, if you, fifty percent, you grew like NWA said you should grow as a sixth grader, or a third grader, or whatever, and we're at sixty-five, shooting for seventy percent of those kids. So, it's a pretty high expectations.
And based on our AP scores, I would say we are meeting the needs of our kids. So some really exciting, um, news to share around AP scores, which were just released to us in the last couple of weeks. Um, what is so fun to share with you is that we have increased the number of students who are taking AP exams. That means we have students who are taking more rigorous course loads. Um, at the high school, we have increased the number of exams taken. So not just the number of students, but also the number of exams that they take. As you likely know, some students take multiple exams. Um, so super excited to see that level of, of, um, engagement for our students. But then conversely, the benefit of that is we're also seeing incredible results on their AP exams. You, um, the state of Missouri a few years ago, or two years ago, clarified that anyone who scores a three or above is automatically attaining college credit within universities at the, in, within the state. And you can see that almost eighty-six percent of our students who have taken these exams are scoring a three or above. Now, when you compare that to the state, the state average is sitting at sixty-five percent. Um, the, the national average is sitting at seventy percent. So definitely a high level, not just of rigor of kids taking the courses, but also the learning experiences that they're having, that they're able to transfer what they're learning into these AP assessments. So, um, something we can be really proud of in terms of academic achievement for our kids.
Is it mostly juniors and seniors that take AP?
Primarily, we have, um, sophomores, we have AP government sophomore, and then there's a few elective classes that they can, they can take. One of the classes that we added this year, um, we, actually, we added two AP classes this year, pre-calc. It was a brand-new, um, um, AP test this year, and then also AP seminar, or AP research. AP research was added this year. So that was ninety-three kids who took AP classes, uh, who took AP tests that wouldn't have been, um, um, able to the previous year, and every single one of them had a three or above in those two areas alone.
You said the pre-calc, every one of them?
Pre-calc, everyone.
I mean, that, that is not an easy test. That's, that's amazing.
And scored a three or above, and then the eleven students who took AP research, a very rigorous course over the course of this year. Um, think about it like a mini dissertation, and every one of them scored three or above as well.
So I'm doing really fast math in my head, and I didn't take pre-calc, so.
Don't ask me, we had an agreement, we wouldn't do any fast math here.
But I'm gonna guess then that somewhere around sixty percent of the kids who could take an AP class, just because of what grade they're in, are actually taking it? Based on these numbers? Is there, is there a number you actually know?
I do not know that offhand.
Because I think that's pretty impressive. Just, just the fact that, that we have that many kids taking the classes, that's, that's impressive.
It goes along with the scholarship, or the tuition money through our partnership with the community college, where it was almost, you know, two million dollars of tuition. I mean, our kids are enrolling in rigorous courses. I mean, they just, they are. Whether they're taking the AP test, or they're getting college credit through the community college, they're challenging themselves.
So this is, I'm sorry, this is my first year, obviously, first time on the board for this, um, workshop. I'm remembering from last year, so it could be wrong, so please correct me. Um, I thought for AP, we had additional breakdowns of, you know, looking at how many students took two tests or, or three tests, and how it changed from your freshman year. So maybe it's a different assessment.
I can probably dig in and see, I know what I have seen are the score breakdowns for every individual test. I've seen that chart. But I haven't personally seen the numbers of kids in the, uh, or the numbers of kids who took a certain number of AP tests.
Okay.
We very well may have it, I just haven't seen that yet.
It, I know it, somewhere in a report that's available, you, let's say we had three, we had five hundred kids taking AP tests, and of those five hundred, there was eleven hundred tests given. So on average, each one would roughly take two tests. But some may take four, some may take three, and there is a way to get that information, so for sure.
It's also how AP scholars, and AP scholars with distinction, we know that it exists, I just couldn't tell you right now what that is.
And it may be a different workshop, um, that this came up at, but I remember thinking about it, 'cause it showed, you know, how many, the different student groups, um, who maybe dropped the number of honors courses that they were taking throughout their time in school, or increased them. Um, but maybe that, is there another workshop that's not assessment, but that would talk about the honors program? Or was that in the honors report?
It might have been in the honors report.
I apologize.
The only time I can think where we might have talked about it in a workshop was when we were comparing, you know, when we were making decisions about IB versus AP also. So, okay, yeah, it might be in that one.
I apologize, I just, as I looked at this, I was confused.
Rachel, we'll get you that data in a Friday packet here. We can get you how many actual bodies took tests, and then how many of those bodies took three, how many of them took two, how many of them took one. We can get you that.
All right, we have just a couple more slides for you.
Uh, so this is some of the focus areas, after looking at all the data of all the assessments. Um, some of the areas we're gonna be focusing on the upcoming school year are focus and target instruction on students that are behind the average. With special focus on our student groups in an effort to close those achievement gaps. Um, I wanted to say, Laura, especially since you asked a question a while ago about the African-American subgroup in, uh, fifth grade, that every single child counts. Sometimes those student groups in a single grade level can be misleading, because some of them, they're really small. So you could be looking at, in third grade, this student group only has six students. So it may seem, oh, look how great they did, or look how poorly they did, but it's just, not to use Dr. Lake's here, but you're only moving a few bodies versus five hundred bodies, so. Uh, but every single one of those students counts, and we have to dig into that and make sure they're getting what they need, um, as we go forward. We're also gonna be focusing on ensuring that IEP goals are in line with grade level standards, and correct progress monitoring tools are available for all staff. Continue to use proficiency scales to increase growth on grade level priority standards. Focus on increasing growth on grade level assessments. Continued support and professional learning on effective instructional strategies is part of our model of instruction. Continued professional learning on the feedback formula, clarity plus evidence plus feedback equals student growth. And a little side note at the bottom, because Dr. Sparks had asked for this, when you add up all of these students who took NWEA, three through nine, our district totals, reading was seventy-nine point seven, and math was seventy-six percent. Uh, before we move to some celebrations, do you have any questions about these focus areas? All right, then I'm gonna let Dr. Lawson do some celebrating.
Yes, I specifically assigned the focus areas to Dr. Henry, so that I could take the highlight areas for all of you. 'Cause I put the presentation together, so. So, um, so Jess, this is just a highlight reel for all the, all the great things that we shared throughout the, the presentation, just so if you wanted to talk about, or if anybody asked any questions, these are your, and yes, here's the great things that our students did. But I mean, the eight, the eighty-six percent for AP is definitely something that we're just all floating on cloud nine about. That's just really getting to that end journey at the very beginning. Second slide showed you that path to college and career readiness, and that's really that journey, um, to get our students to do that. And we'll be able to, um, share with you soon ACT profile reports, so we'll have some ACT data for you as well. And then, um, that eighty-seven percent of third grade students, um, beating that spring CBM reading. You know, we talked a little bit about like the, like, we talked about programs and the instructional piece. But I really, just because I'm in the assessment world, just really wanna highlight, we now are assessing students and finding out where they are too. And that's been a big, huge change over the years. So, you know, having the actual data to capture whether something is working or not working, I think has a great impact, and especially of teachers, and I know they are, 'cause they're, they're our heroes in our district. But especially when they're using the learning, or using the data for learning and making decisions to inform their next steps with individual students and/or the entire curriculum. So those are just some things to highlight. But just going down, you can read this, the, the, um, particular grade level and content areas that met that eighty percent of our, um, our eighty percent target or higher. And then just giving you that idea that we're gonna go ahead and take that NWEA reading into the year, grade three through nine, the last bullet, that seventy-nine point seven percent, and we're gonna truncate that to eighty percent, so that we met the target, so, okay? But we wanted to also make sure that we didn't come off in any way shady with the data. We're, we're ready to reveal what it is and be completely transparent. So that's our highlight reel. Any questions for us?
No questions, but.
I just wanna affirm that from, um, a parent perspective, the NWA has been a big deal in my house. And it has really done what the theory says it should do. My kids care about it, and they care when they see growth. And so I, um, I think that this is just, it, it, from a personal standpoint, it's really helped my kids grow, so thank you.
Because, you know, when you think about a kid, if you get stuck in that cycle of the only assessment you're talking about and encouraging is that autopsy, that state test, when you get, once you get below basic, it is, there, there's just no hope there. There's like, and like Jill mentioned, you know, if you got a kid really low, but they grew, you know, they may be in the twenty-fifth percentile, but their growth was eighty. I mean, wow, what a great thing to celebrate for that kid to continue to help them to work hard. Hey, you're seeing, you're getting better. And so, um, I, I love hearing the fact that your kids care about that assessment, so.
Can I just, 'cause I really just wanna like double down on what Dr. Lake just said, and, and, and do this is, um, because I'm Student Services as well, right? So the idea that our students get one assessment with a performance of, and I'm in or I'm out, that's the, that's how they define themselves when they think about, I'm either proficient or advanced, or I'm basic or below. I'm in or I am out. And when you have a particular assessment, just to reiterate what was just said, that says, well, I'm not there yet, but look at this particular growth and define those things about what students are doing really well. I think it's amazing, because you just want students to never define themselves by one data point, you know, that when, you can do it by, by more. And we always wanna approach students with a strengths-based, that maybe that's just my way. But looking at their strengths and saying, you're not there yet, but we can break down these particular things and show you what you can work on. And guess what? You get to try again here really soon, and let's see if you made that particular growth that you wanted to. So I'm glad to hear that it's, um, working well, and I, I, I have been hearing those positive things. So that is really just, thank you for sharing that.
Hey, I lied, I do have one question. Have we done any polling of the students on their feelings around the NWA? Just, uh, hey, how do you guys feel about these assessments, and where do, where do you, where do you land on that? Just a sensing session.
I would say systematically no, but I know that conversations that teachers would have anecdotally with, with, um, students, you know, kind of gauging the, you know, whether it's the, how did you feel before or after you've taken the test, you, you know, or as you're reflecting. I think that going back to Julia's point also, you know, one of our areas of focus is student agency. And the fact that our kids are setting goals, and then looking to track their goals and how their learning happens, those pieces have been, we've gotten feedback on that being empowering. So specifically to the tool itself, not any systematic thing, anecdotally, and then in, in comparison with our Lindbergh Life Success Skills, yes, we've definitely seen positive yards there.
Okay, thank you.
Um, and then, I wanna make sure this is correct, the way I'm thinking of this. When looking forward, or looking ahead to the fall, um, or December, when the state comes out with our report card, they will not be using this assessment data when they come out with that report card. They will be using the MAP data, correct?
There is an August State Board meeting that will determine that for us. So I, what I can tell you is that there is an alternative APR that is in development, that is being presented to the state, and the State Board of Education will make that final determination, um, so we hope.
And if you remember, APR, it was, we were one of the few districts in the state that had a ninety or higher. They're actually, if we stay in that same APR, our actual score would have been, what, ninety-four? It, it went up like four percent, ba, because there were so many districts that were like, for instance, we had a neighboring district here that's very high performing, when the highest performing school districts in the country was, uh, in the eighties. And they're like, okay, something's not right with this measurement. And so we talked about that before, but, um, so we'll see. Um, we'll have either our, um, our, our test scores will still be there, people can see what the percentage. People can see what the percentage of proficient and those things are. But we'll hopefully have a alternative APR, so.
And then, to emphasize again, I guess, that for those that are watching, this is the best data to look at to assess how our students are performing. And it's incredible, as others have already said, that we can break it down to different points of the year, different skill sets, or it's just incredible, the amount of data that's available. But regardless of whether the state lets us use it or not, hopefully, this is the best, this is the best data. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, well, just thank you guys for presenting tonight and to all the work you put into, not only our presentation, but all year and our teachers' work.
Great job.
Much appreciated.
Yeah, Jill, great job. I know, I saw you and Craig, both of you, Craig, just practicing today. And just the time and effort you guys should have seen them putting into this presentation. I think that was reflecting, and then to, tonight, tonight in their presentation. So, great job, both of you, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Do I have a motion to adjourn Board Workshop sixteen hundred?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Motion by Megan, second by Andrew. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Board Workshop sixteen hundred is adjourned.